Yes.
Yes, okay, public comment, recognition of guests, hello guests. And then up next is presentations. Okay, no presentations, up next is communication, in your packet is the IASB liaison talking points to review committee reports.
No committee reports, we had to cancel the finance committee since Kent did not have the AFR prepared.
So hopefully finance will meet between now and next month, and next we have administrative reports, Hillary.
Okay, so superintendent's report, we had a wonderful first day back on January 3rd, that was a Friday, it was for the grownups only, that's curriculum day, so our certified staff get paid at their daily rate to come on that day, it's not part of their contractual pay, we had a very good turnout, we invited PSRP to attend as well because we didn't want them to miss out on the very special presentation that we had from Gary Brooks, if you're in the education world, you've probably seen him on social media, he is a principal at Lexington, I don't know how he does multiple jobs full-time, he's an active principal at, in Lexington Kentucky, and he is one who posts on social media, a wide variety of comical things, when you're in the education world, you think they're all very funny, but he was with us for three hours, he did not spend the whole entire time doing the funny stuff, although everybody enjoyed that, he had several object lessons where he talked about, you know, one was, he gives a pacifier to everybody in his staff, and just to remind them that, that child that you're having a difficult time with, that's somebody's baby, they've sent you their child and they're under your care right now, so some really good stuff, he really talked about the importance of climate and culture, and not waiting for somebody else to make a difference, you be the one that makes the difference, he also talked about when you have an issue with a colleague, don't go to the principal and expect them to do your work for you, go to them directly, that's the way it should be done, how embarrassing would it be if the principal had to come in and tell Sally that you were upset about such and such, so it was a really good message, and I heard Sandra Shelton say right, right away, that was the best PD she's ever had, I've been at this for thirty-four and a half years, it was the best I've ever had too, and I heard multiple other people saying that in other buildings, so it was very impactful and a great way to get a nice positive start, plus, it was nice to be here so we could get Chromebooks home to kids, any parents that could, that were watching social media, because we did use that e-learning day on Monday, so I'm going to highlight again in my monthly newsletter that goes out, probably tomorrow, the difference between an emergency day and an e-learning day, emergency days, no learning, so you make it up at the end, e-learning day, we send something out, you don't make it up at the end, so looks like we have some temperatures coming up, that'll be a little bit questionable, so we'll have to figure out, and we will use all of our media channels, and then Christie posts to radio and TV as well. I am pleased to also finish my report by saying that the parajoint committee has met already twice this year, four members from the union, and then four members from the administrative team, and we talk about the evaluation process, that's what we're doing right now, looking at that instrument, we're finding that there could be potentially some places in there where teachers might need more support, their scores are sometimes being inflated by an excellent SLO, and that doesn't put us in the place as administrators where we can get in there and do a professional development plan when it might be needed, so we're working together on that, we made some great progress the last time we met by using instruments from around our area, and looking at fake profiles of scores, and seeing how sometimes our document gives a very high score where another school would give it a lower score, so we want to make sure that we're protecting our people and supporting them in the way they need, and I think we're making good progress, we'll meet again at the end of this month, so that's my report, next I'll go, before I ask if you have any questions, next I'll go to the quarterly financial report, that was not ready for your packet, so there was a paper copy back on the table, let's see, I wanted to update you, column D, all the way down, you'll see in the bright pink there that it says those are unaudited fund balances, again, we're hoping to have those fund balances accurate by today, still don't have our AFR, and by the way, we're not the only ones, in fact, the state has extended some special ed deadlines because the AFR is needed for that, and they've extended it, the deadline for that document by two months, it was supposed to be due this month, so everybody across the state is having a hard time, so anyway, those are still unaudited, if you look in the, in column F with the light yellow, that's where our actual revenues are to date, and we are halfway through the fiscal year, the important column for me is column G, which shows the percentage of revenues received to date, and so if we're fifty percent of the way through the year, I want to see that we're fifty percent or more receiving those revenues, so ed fund is looking very good, O and M is next, transportation looking good, working cash, you'll see that's low, I'll come back to that in a minute, and then you look down at the bottom, everything looks pretty healthy down there except for the health, life, safety, fourteen percent, so there's a note down at the bottom, it says we're doing well on our second quarter revenues, revenues for funds seventy and ninety appear to be low, those accounts, what feeds those accounts would be the local tax dollars and interest, and right now, with the transition to our new system, we don't have our interest up to date in our record, so it's, it's not showing there, it's in the bank, but it's not showing on the paper, so that way you can't see it in the percentage, so those are actually healthier than what it looks like. Okay, and then going to the expenditure column, again, in the light yellow in column I, you'll see the actual expenditures to date, and the way you grade or see if those are appropriate, you look in column J, and up on the top, those are called our open funds, we're right at, we've spent forty-four percent of what we thought we would in the ed fund, that's good, forty-three percent, fifty-seven percent, transportation, we never get reimbursed as much as we should, so that's always a little bit off, but we're okay, then if you look down at the bottom, bond and interest, we've spent one hundred and nineteen percent, I found out today that I made an error in the budget, and I'll draw your attention to exactly where it is, on this paper, it's column H, line twenty, and I've put it in a little bit darker blue there, you might be able to notice, that eight hundred and forty-six thousand, that's not the correct amount that we'll be spending on bond and interest this year, it's one million one hundred and twenty-one thousand, I don't know why I missed that when we put our budget in in September, have no fear, we have the funds for it, I just wrote the wrong number in there, which means we have to do an amendment, talk about it in May, approve it in June, but it's not a, not a problem to fix that, that error, it was just a clerical error of writing a wrong number, if you look at the other funds down there and how much they've been spent, we're on target, it looks like site and construction, fund sixty is low at twenty-two percent, that's because, that's the track and the concession building, and that's just, we're not, we haven't been that far to spend that much money yet, so that's okay, fund eighty, tort, looks like it's a little bit high, that's because you pay your insurance bills at the beginning of the fiscal year, so that's always high at the beginning, health, life, safety, looks like it's perfect right there, but actually it has nothing to do with being halfway through the year, that's just related to the HLS projects that we're doing, that has the roofing in it, that has the part of the secure entry that we've been paying for so far, so I think I just explained all the different things that I wrote down below, so if you have any questions on this or on my report, I'd be happy to answer.
If there's no questions, Mr. Payton?
Good evening, it's been actually a pretty short period of time since we saw you last, and in reference, I think we've had about ten days of school, so after we met last time, actually, we had a really awesome last two days of our first kind of half of the school year, on the twentieth, actually, it was the twentieth, it was the Thursday after we met, I believe, we went to the Princess Theater over in Leroy, and we were able to watch The Wild Robot with all of our pre-K through third grade students, I wanted to thank once again PIE for supporting that, they do fund that for everyone, they get to go to the movie, they get a snack, they get a drink, it's just a great way to kind of close out the school year, additionally, on the next day, we celebrated all of our positive behavior throughout the first half of the year with our gotcha parties and our gotcha store, so for those who don't know what a gotcha store is, our students get to earn gotchas throughout the school year, those are used or earned, I should say, for making just positive choices, doing what's expected throughout the day, and the idea is to reinforce those positive behaviors, they get to use that money to, to go in and buy different things from the store, and then we had a gotcha party at the end of the day where we had a special visitor, Santa Claus came, I wanted to say thank you to the Farmer City Fire Department because they always provide their engine to bring Santa, so we appreciate that partnership, it's just a great afternoon, they get to see Santa, they get to, they get a book from Santa, we do cookies and hot chocolate, it's just a great way, once again, to end that school semester, let's see, what else do we have? I-ready scores, we did complete those at the end, we talked a little bit about that in December, but we have some positive data to kind of share, we did do some analyzing of that, and just some, some tentative stuff that we have right now, but you know, when we looked at our annual growth goal, basically, we look at students, kind of where they begin the year in the fall, and then obviously, we have kind of a growth goal at the end of the year, but right now, we can kind of see where they are on, kind of in regards to the progress that they've made, and hopefully, it kind of give us an idea where they will end up at the end of the year, eighty-two percent of right now, of our students are on track to meet their reading growth goal, which is really exciting at this point, last year at this time, we were on sixty-four percent, so we've really made a positive increase there, and additionally, with our math goals, we had about fifty-nine percent of our students on track, and right now, we're at sixty-nine, so we're continually making positive growth there from last year to this year, our, our teachers have worked really hard, our students are working hard, and, and we're continuing to make that positive growth, so we're excited about that, last thing that I wanted to share was just that, you know, we have been really busy with, with behaviors and expectations as we return, it's so critical during this first couple of weeks when kids come back from being gone for two weeks, to reestablish routines, procedures, expectations, so we've talked a lot about reteaching those, not only in the classroom, but throughout common areas in our building, like the cafeteria, well, we haven't had much on the playground because it's been so cold, so we've had a lot of indoor stuff, but we will do a lot of that as we return, and we have, just to make sure that we have those clear expectations, there's clarity of what students need to do, which will hopefully diminish some of those behavior issues that we encounter and provide more time for instruction, so that's kind of our thought process there. Okay, any, any questions?
That is really encouraging news for somebody who's been receiving your kids moving down the road, that's, thank you very much, so as we talked about with curriculum day, that was a really great event, we had a great turnout, you know, curriculum day's not one of those required days, but people do find value in it, and I think they found a lot of value in it this year especially, just talking about our I-ready winter diagnostics also, so we, we made the decision to give those, because the window could be open either before break or after break, and it's kind of a really tough thing to consider, like you get kids right before Christmas break, how serious are they going to take this, and that's been a discussion that we've been having with our staff over the three years that I've been here, and so we made the decision the last couple of years, let's do this before break, so that the way the, the way the statistics work, it's based on the number of, of days of instruction, so even if you take off those, like, let's say you'd wait two weeks, they're going to assume, the test assumes that you've had two weeks of instruction while they've been sent at home, so it, it does work to our advantage, and it, the last couple of years, our winter data, which is kind of that mid-year checkpoint, so you take it in the fall, you take it in the winter, and you take it in the spring, and those growth goals are set in the fall for the spring, so that winter time is really to check to see, are we making progress on our goals like we should, and it is a struggle to get kids at this time of the year to really give us the best authentic data, which is what we're looking for, and I like to report that we've now gone through collaborations with both our fourth through sixth grade levels, and then this afternoon, we went through a junior high where we worked with Kelly Soliday Page, Shawna, Cole Ross, and myself, and looking at, okay, how do we leverage this data along with what's going in the classroom to restructure any interventions at this mid-year point, so that we're making sure that we're really targeting learning for our kids, both fourth through eighth, and so it's just, it's, it's been really helpful for us, and so this is a great tool, and we continue to hope to get to use this. Any questions?
Ryan forgot to mention that also on that Friday before Christmas break, that Elf on a Shelf made an appearance, and I don't know if you got to see any of those pictures, that was quite fantastic, again, let's see, yeah, so I-ready, we're all at that, at that stage, and at the high school, it's a little different, because I-ready only has programming, like with interventions and diagnostics and stuff, that basically measure kids up to ninth grade, so, but what we find is sometimes kids are coming to us and they're maybe not quite at ninth grade level with their reading or math, and so we're able to continue to work with those students until they, you know, show that they can be at that level, and so what we're looking, what we're seeing now, a lot of our goals are based on, we look at the number of percentage of kids that are not yet there, and hoping that they can be either one grade level closer, or, you know, at, at grade level by the time the diagnostics are done, and so we're seeing some really good, really good growth, I'll say, I was really pleasantly surprised with our tenth grade math growth this year, the number of kids that got up to grade level through last semester was fantastic, so we'll continue to tear that stuff apart and figure out ways to help the kids that are not quite growing as much as we'd like them to, our instructional leadership team met last week, again, yeah, we haven't had a whole lot going on, they were having fun parties, we were doing final exams, not quite fun parties, so ILT met, and some of the things we talked about, we're setting our SEL dates and stuff for, for this year, kind of getting those locked in, we've decided our first topic is going to be about gossiping, because we find that some kids struggle with that, and helping them recognize that that can be online, and then also giving some, them some coping strategies of if you feel that somebody's gossiping about you, what do you, what do you do with that, so, so looking forward to that at the end of this month, really, what we spent a lot of our time talking about was grade analysis from first semester, we were looking at, because we talked with staff about, what do final exams look like, and how does, what should, what should they look like, if, if you have a class average of eighty percent of, for your overall grade for your class going into the final exam, and, you know, what do you expect from your final exam average, should it be sixty percent, should it be a hundred percent, or should maybe if it's, you know, reflecting what you guys, what you learned in the class, should it be closer to that eighty percent, and we're finding that through those discussions, that the gap was a little bit narrower this time around, and so we'll continue to, to work on that and help, help teachers think about what it is that we're assessing and how we're measuring that, yep, and fun stuff, I guess, winter sports that we have going on with the basketball season, tomorrow night is our girls' basketball senior night, so chance to come out and support the girls' basketball team tomorrow night for senior night, and boys will have their senior night, before we meet here again, it's on Valentine's Day, so if you want to bring a date to senior night on February fourteenth, that's boys' basketball, so, any questions? Great, Chelsea's not here to grill me.
Okay, I just want to kind of highlight some of the additions that you saw in the Blue Ridge High School course catalog, the first thing that I wanted to talk about, which we've talked about the last couple board meetings, is the addition pending your approval of Ag Business 135, which will be a dual-credit course through Parkland College, Jaclyn Meisner has already been vetted, and she's been approved to teach that, if it's been, if it's approved, in addition to getting dual credit for this course, this is a course that also counts as the consumer education credit, if students choose to go that route for their senior year, the next two courses I want to highlight are psychology and sociology, we've had these courses in the past, they haven't been offered recently, the last time that we had psychology, it was a semester course, but we've looked at the content, and we feel that there's plenty to make this a full-year course, so we're going to do a full year of psychology, the texts were pretty outdated that we had, so we're in the process right now of looking at different textbooks to see which ones would meet our needs, the other course that we want to bring back is sociology, and for the first year that we bring it back, we feel like we want to keep that at a semester credit, and again, we're looking at new texts for that course as well, more dual-credit courses, the educational students pathway, that's where we're kind of pulling our kids who think they might want to go into education, and giving them the opportunity to take some courses that focus on two things, one would be education in a diverse society, and then the second course would be teaching and learning with technology in the classroom, that structure is going to be a little bit different, that's going to be kind of, you could call it a collaboration between D. Lam Weldon, Monticello, and B. Mint, the D. Lam Weldon superintendent kind of took the lead on writing a grant for that, and then brought us all into it, where our students will have the opportunity to attend these courses virtually, we think that it'll be like a zero hour, so starting at seven fifteen in the morning until eight, that's really the only way we can make it work between the four school districts, the grant does allow for us to hire someone to supervise our in-person students, and then they will kind of be a liaison between the student and the instructor, so that's what those two courses entail, and those are dual-credit through Eastern, so where our other ones are through Parkland College, those two courses are dual-credit through Eastern, next, I wanted to bring up AP Chemistry again, Colin Skirlock is our current instructor, and he reached out to us and said, hey, I think I'm ready to take this next step, and so we have looked at his course, we think that it will align perfectly with AP Chemistry, and he and I were researching training, and we think we found a couple options that could take place in June if we decide to proceed with offering this course, it was great that we went ahead and adopted new science curriculum last year, because that really did a nice job of aligning with the AP course, so that we don't have to get new materials, the, the texts that we have now will be sufficient, we did put a note in the course guide that if, you know, we don't foresee this happening, but if we would get a different instructor in that course, there's a caveat that says if the instructor of the course is not qualified for AP, the course would just then be taught as Chem II, but we don't foresee that happening, we just wanted to have that caveat in there just in case, and then the final thing that I wanted to talk to you about is, we have the PACE framework that's going to go into effect July first of 2025, and that's a really career readiness skills in grade six through twelfth grade, and we currently have purchased a program called Zello, we talked a little bit about that last year, where it's an online platform, but it has lessons that introduces different careers, you can learn about, you know, how much you would make in this career, what are the qualifications that you would need, and so in preparation for making sure that we're meeting those standards, we are looking at adding an exploratory in, at the eighth grade level, that would just, we would rotate our kids once a quarter, where they would really get to dig into different careers, which the timing will be perfect as they start to set their schedule for high school, they can really start to have some of those meaningful conversations about maybe possible career choices that they're interested in, so they can start lining up their high school courses to lead them in the right direction. Any questions, yes?
Just wondering, what kind of, what kind of interest have you had in sociology and psychology from the kids, has kids been expressing interest?
Not, we've had some kids express interest, but I think that once they know that there's an opportunity for it, I think that we'll have more, Mr. Easter, have you had, can you speak to that a little bit?
The instructor was talking about it with some of the students, and he feels that there's, there's some good interest in that, and we've heard that, I, I've actually heard that for a couple of years, that that would be a, something good to bring on, we just haven't had the staff who was interested in doing that.
Yeah, it was great with our, one of our new social science teacher at the high school, he has every social science endorsement there is, so he, he has some other plans that at some point he might want to talk about, so.
Other questions? And you can read the rest of the administrative reports in the packet, up next is approval of consent items. If there's no questions or comments, I need a motion and second to approve the consent agenda items listed on attachment A as presented. Derek? Sid? Yes, up next is old business, press 117, second reading.
So we brought press 117 to you, not a very large packet, last month, no questions on my end with approving that packet, any of the changes that would be needed within the district, we've already made contact with those personnel, so we are ready for your vote to approve, press 117.
Does anyone have any questions on that? If not, I need a motion and second to approve press 117 policies for Blue Ridge CUSD number eighteen as presented. Derek and Jonathan, if you weren't in that. Yes. And then next we have Vision 2030 Resolution.
Okay, so last month, we talked about Vision 2030, this has really been led by Illinois
So last month, you were able to read the information that was presented. It's also included in your packet now, but they're looking for boards of education to adopt a resolution stating that you do support that, and that will be, show that we have a collaborative effort to urge the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes that would be needed.
At least six minutes late.
Grand entrance. That would help us push forward the necessary legislative changes to implement the recommendations with these three pillars that are provided in 2030. So your approval would say that, yes, we are signing the resolution, and that can be, I would fill in that paperwork tomorrow with the state.
Any questions on Vision 2030? Okay. If not, I need a motion and second to adopt the Vision 2030 Resolution for Blue Ridge C U S D number 18 as presented. Derek?
Sig.
Jonathan?
Sig. And Jonathan? Jonathan? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Up next, we have consideration of CFST Communication Campaign.
Okay. So for the last two months, we've been talking about the county facility sales tax for McLean County. Again, we're in three counties. We have a very small population enrollment that would be in Bellflower, that would be our McLean County portion. And so really, Unit 5 by themselves, they were able to decide to put this on the McLean County ballot for April 1st because they have more than 51 percent of the enrollment in their district for the entire county. The other county schools are following suit. You voted last month to yes, say that we would be a part of that. You signed that resolution. We talked a little bit about a, the purchasing of organization to do some of the promotion informational. This is not a yes campaign, it's not a no campaign, it's an informational campaign because a county facility sales tax, it's kind of a difficult idea to understand. So I had asked the corporation, the company, if we would have a reduced rate because we are one of the smaller groups. Captivate responded by saying they would take their base product, which was a $5,000 cost across the board for every other district, and they would make that 2,500 for us. So tonight, we need a yes or a no if we're going to do that. I will say that today I emailed you, and we have two hard copies of what Captivate has planned. You can see kind of a timeline, the materials that they would produce, whether it's postcards or, you know, social media blast, that kind of thing. They also want to have somebody in the district that would kind of spearhead this informational campaign if we wanted to have something where the public could come in and ask any questions. Again, we're a very small fish in the whole big pond. Our anticipated income would be $80,000 for a year. Other people are getting millions of dollars a year. So it's, we're just kind of going along with what everybody else is doing. So again, we need to make our decision tonight if we want to do a promotional campaign. That would be specific to Blue Ridge. There was a meeting yesterday, I, even though we're not, we haven't paid anything, I still attended the meeting. And they're putting together kind of generic information, and I do believe that we would be able to have access to that so we could put that out on our social media, even though it doesn't say Blue Ridge specifically, because it is a countywide campaign. So you can see there what my recommendation is, and then you get to make a choice.
Any comment?
I think, I think the information that you put out online in your report and everything monthly and those additional handouts or something to post on the webpage probably be perfectly adequate, and we don't have to shell out 2,500 bucks, especially considering the very small group that we're impacting.
So the generic?
Yeah.
Countywide information?
Yeah, I agree with that. I just, I have a problem with us paying $2,500 for something that has, we have the smallest portion of McLean County, the smallest amount of voters. It's not really us, it's been kind of being forced upon us because they have the majority to put it on the ballot, so I'm not opposed to it. So I think we should put out something saying, hey, we approve of it, but I don't think we need to invest in it.
Technically, you know, G C, I mean, I agree, but GCMS has 12 students in McLean County. We do have 63, so we're not quite the smallest.
GCMS is not coming to the meetings, by the way.
Can't imagine for those 12 students why they aren't there. Yeah, no. Again, when you look at that, if you're saying all these other districts are paying 5,000, and they have like 4,800 students, and we have 63, how would only be a 50 percent reduction? I thought, wow, that's, it doesn't make sense. Yeah. Okay. So do we want to go with no motion here then? Okay. So no motion.
Yep.
So we'll move to new business. Up first is review for approval of 2023-2024 Annual Audit and Shared Report and Fiscal Efficiency Schedule.
Which would be postponed to, to be scheduled special meeting due to the auditor not having the materials ready for tonight.
Okay. No vote on that. Up next is approval of flue, fuel purchasing contract fiscal year 26.
Okay. So you can see that we're not, we don't have the opportunity to be a part of a consortium this year. That will come, well, this year, meaning FY '26, this next year it means. We will have an opportunity with Evergreen FS to get back in for FY '27 if we want to do that. You'll see the fuel pricing that's available to you there effective January 7th. It might not be exactly the same tomorrow if you approve and I say yes to them, but we will get the current prices for gas and diesel and have that set aside for us if we sign the contract, and that would be for FY '26.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I need a motion and a second to approve entering into contract with Evergreen FS for fuel purchasing for Blue Ridge C U S D number 18 for fiscal year 2026 as presented. Okay. Sig? Derek?
Yes.
Up next is the BRHS Fiscal Year 26 Course Catalog.
Okay. So usually this is something that comes to you this time of year, but it's on the consent agenda. This time, I wanted to make sure that Paige had an opportunity to talk about, to highlight all the things that we have. I only included in here the things that are new to us, being the advanced placement and the dual credit. She mentioned also the psychology and sociology. Those aren't new, that's just a return to the course catalog, so we're just asking for you to approve that. There will be a little bit of cleanup maybe of the catalog, but the content was appropriate in what you, what you saw online.
Do you have any questions? If not, I need a motion and a second to approve the FY '26 BRHS Course Catalog for Blue Ridge C U S D number 18 as presented. Jonathan? Sig?
Yes.
Yes. And I need a motion and a second to move from open session to closed session for appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal of specific employees of the district at Blue 734. She got it. I was like, Paige taught quicker. She was up here like, who was first? Sig? Was that Jason? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That was good.
Thank you for coming.